All right, the time is 6:00 PM on Monday, December 7th, 2020. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor Tara Walter.
Here.
Council Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Larson. She texted me, she's loading, but she's on her way in.
Excellent.
Councilmember Michelle Cordes.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes.
Here.
And we do have Councilmember-elect Arthur Snake Neal, and we do have Councilmember-elect Johnny Mendoza.
All right, thank you gentlemen for joining us this evening. At this time, we will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the under God and
so I'm gonna push it over to Thank you so much. Item number five is Call to the Public. Call to the Public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting. May ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Ms. Garcia, do we have anybody that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Rick Luster.
I'm in the office and I have Rick Luster with me.
Excellent. Hi, Mr. Luster, how are you this evening?
Terrific, thank you, and thank you all. Good evening, everyone. Enjoying our winter weather? Enjoy it fast, it might not last. I've written out, to try to be as concise as I can, the thing I would like to offer for your consideration. And it's regarding a truck bypass for Florence. Please consider designating Florence Heights Drive as a truck route instead of using Main Street to Butte Avenue to Highway 79, which is the current traffic flow. Time is of the essence to appeal to the Arizona Department of Transportation since the intersection of Main Street and Arizona 287 on the south end of town is scheduled to be changed by ADOT into a roundabout sometime in the near future, I understand. Currently, eastbound traffic on Arizona 287 enters Florence on the south end of Main Street. To connect to Highway 87, traffic stops and proceeds with three maneuvers required. A 90-degree turn on the south end of Main Street. A second 90-degree turn at Main Street and Butte Avenue to travel eastward. And a third 90-degree turn on Butte Avenue, turning onto Highway 79. And the commercial traffic, over 95% of it is all headed northbound. During this 1.25-mile process, traffic passes approximately 40 residences, with many front doors as close as 30 feet to the street. Florence Heights Drive already has some heavy traffic, including the Florence School District Bus Yard and the Pinell County Sheriff's Department Maintenance Yard. This route cuts the distance through town to one-half mile, with only four homes and about seven apartments facing Florence Heights Drive, compared to the 40 residents who are on the route that is currently in use. Additionally, traffic through, passes through three school crossing zones, two of which have 15 mile-per-hour signs in place three times a day during school days. Rarely do any of these trucks stop at any business along the route. They're simply passing through Florence, en route to other towns, to the mines and gravel pits with their cargo. Directing commercial traffic to flow to Florence Heights Drive shortens the travel to Highway 79 by one-third for trucks and eliminates two 90-degree turns on their route through town once the roundabout is completed. As a resident at 481 East Butte Avenue, I daily hear the commercial traffic beginning at 4:30 AM and lasting till about 9:00 PM. While I hear the trucks working through their gears at Arizona 79 and Butte Avenue, and then I hear them again at Butte Avenue and Main Street, I sympathize with all the extra work, fuel, and time required to navigate through the middle of town. I understand this change in traffic flow is no simple matter since it requires meetings with Arizona Department of Transportation. But I hope you see that this would be a great benefit to those of us who reside along the route, as well as the drivers who are just passing through town. I would like to just add, I'm not approaching this, I have no patience for people who, like in the town of Maricopa, move by the dairies and then complain about the smell, or people that buy property by the airport and then complain about the traffic. So if it was only for my convenience, I would not be bringing this here. But it would be a benefit, not only to the 40 homes that are right along this route, it would also be a benefit to the drivers of these vehicles as they pass through. I just mentioned this to Judy Hughes, and one of the questions she asked is, what do the GPSs say? And depending on your settings, right now, MapQuest recommends traffic passing through Florence to go north on Attaway and then across Hot Highway. And I know you're probably aware, there's a real problem with traffic backing up at Hot Highway and the Highway 79, just on the other side of the Gila River. Google Maps, depending on the settings, but most of them are out now actually routing traffic down Florence Heights Drive. So there is some traffic going that way. But I think this would be a benefit. I realize this is a major thing, but I just wanted to offer this to all of you for your consideration. I've lived here in Florence for five years on Butte Avenue. My wife was actually born here in Florence, her parents married right after graduating Florence High School. We've always loved the town, we think this would be a benefit, not only to the town, but also the people I respect are doing their jobs, driving their trucks and delivering cargoes. I don't want to make it harder for them. Technically, if the roundabouts end, they might actually pass through town without coming to a complete stop, if they're going westbound, if we did this. They would turn on Florence Heights, go through the roundabout, and head on the way down 287, the other direction.
I apologize for cutting you off, but that is the end of the time. But I did have one question to ask you.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you, we've had several opportunities over the past many years to communicate with ADOT. We've had work sessions, they have come in. Have you already communicated this to ADOT in any of the previous years?
No, ma'am. And, you know, I was not aware of any opportunities to do that. But I thought I would start here with you guys and felt like that it would carry some weight if the city council felt that this was a valid improvement for the traffic, as well as for the residents.
Well, I will have Mr. Billingsley or Mr. Bidderdoe is reach out to you, because there have been extensive conversations, surveys, studies, open public meetings, just to share some of that insight and information that you may not have already have heard, as well as to gain your active, and maybe it's bringing something new to the table. So I want to say thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you for handing me out, I really do appreciate it, and I wish you well in all of your work here. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir. We'll follow up with you as well.
Okay.
Mayor Walter, I have two other members of the public ready to speak, Roger Beatty and Nancy Larson.
All right, excellent. Let's hear from Mr. Beatty, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm here from the Chamber of Commerce this evening, and unfortunately, have to say goodbye with the changing of the council. We now are losing Karen Wall as a member, as an ex officio member of our Chamber Board. And publicly, I just wanted to thank her for her service. She was invaluable member of the team and will be sorely missed. I know she's going to continue on with some other things in town, so we will continue to enjoy seeing her and having her help around town. But the chamber is disappointed that we will be losing her from our board. We do have a small gift for her, which I will talk to her later about when I can present to her. But, like I said, I just wanted to publicly thank her for all her years of service with the Chamber Board and all that she did for the chamber over the years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roger.
Aw, thank you, Mr. Beatty. All right, and Ms. Nancy Larson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just wondering if the town of Florence has any plans on how to react to the approval of Prop 207?
Our teams are already working on that with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, as well as other municipalities. There'll be information that will be coming forth in the future.
You think you will, under health and safety, try and enact a ban against dispensaries coming in?
So during our Call to the Public, we can listen to any concerns you have, and then I can give direction on future responses.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Do you have anything else?
No.
All right, thank you very much. I will direct Mr. Brent Billingsley to communicate with you as to when we have future discussions. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time?
There's no more members of the public to speak at this time, ma'am.
All right, excellent. We will go ahead and close Call to the Public. Item number six, Public Hearing and Presentations. Item A is a public hearing on a conditional use permit by Higher Dimension Christian Center to allow the existing building to serve as a worship and clothing donation center with the zoning classifications, neighborhood office, single-family residential, multifamily residential, and manufactured home subdivision at a property located at 424 and 448 East Butte Avenue, and discussion approval/disapproval to adopt Resolution Number 1753-20, which is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving a conditional use permit request for Pinell County APN 200-50-0690 and APN 200-50-0700, PZ 20-26. Mr. Larry Harmer, at this time, I will open it up to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's good to see you tonight. This request, as you have mentioned, comes to us from the Higher Dimension Christian Center. Their primary facility is in Mesa. They do have some members of the congregation that are in the Florence area, and they do want to open up to services and support for them down in this area. The building that they've chosen sits fronting on Butte. It is, as you noted, has multiple zoning classifications. And why, for life of me, we haven't figured out yet. This is the only time I've ever run across this in my career, but you have about a one-half mile square area north of Butte in this vicinity that has four different zoning classifications on it. And because of that, there's a myriad of uses that would be allowed. The existing building in this location has been used for offices and limited retail in the past. And so it does fall under that neighborhood office type of classification, within which a conditional use permit is required for a church. The area has development or vacant lots on all sides. To the north is residential, to the east is a vacant lot. To the south is, although zoned office, has single-family residential on it currently. To the west is the Pinell County complex itself. The building on site will be divided into two portions. One portion would be for the holding of services, Bible studies, et cetera. The other portion would be for the donation center, which at this time, we understand, will be solely for the distribution of clothing to the needy. Currently, there are existing development, existing parking, existing handicap spaces on site. And that, in part, is the topic of the item at 12A on your agenda tonight, which has to do with the infill incentive area. The representatives of the Christian Center have indicated to us that the operation of each of the two parts would be offsetting the donation center during the week, and then the service area on the weekends themselves, so that there would not necessarily be a conflict in the use of parking, of the onsite parking that's there. In general, this meets all the criteria that we would normally require for a conditional use permit. Neighborhood meeting and public hearing in front of the Planning Zoning Commission was held on November 19th. There were no public comments received at either event. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval to the Town Council with stipulations, as noted in your staff report. If you know, primarily, these stipulations are standard. You have seen these many times in other types of cases. The one that the Planning Commission did add was number seven, since there had been a commitment at this point for clothing only from the donation center, that if the donation center were to grow to any larger items, any outdoor storage must be weather-protected and screened from public view, which would also be a requirement of the Development Code as it stands now, anyway. We have several representatives of the Higher Dimension Christian Center with us tonight. I will defer to Pastor Rodney, if he wishes to speak on behalf, or if he wants to defer to the other representatives.
Good evening, Pastor Rodney. Would you like to speak at this time?
I think he's looking for his mute button.
Okay.
And not successfully. Pastor Brenda? Do either one want to jump in?
Trenton, can you unmute them over?
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, perfect. All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, we just want to say thank you, guys, for having us to be a part of this meeting. We just want to, as we want to be a, you know, strong part of the community, a very vital part of the community. And we just thank you for the, as far as the support, as far as giving us the instructions and things for us to follow, so that way, we can have the building and everything brought up to, you know, to compliance. And we just, we're welcome to be a part of the community, and we just want to be a help, not only to just, you know, the adults, but also into the youth also. So we really are excited about this and excited about the new Florence that's going to be.
Excellent. Pastors, would you like to say anything as well?
I just, yeah, everything Pastor Rodney had just spoke. You know, we're in total agreement with that, and we're just, you know, we're looking forward to, like he said, everything that this is going to bring to Florence and just, you know, everything that you guys are doing for us as well, as the church. So we appreciate it.
All right, excellent. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time, or ask any questions?
Mayor Walter, none at this time.
All right. Going with closing. So open to the public. And at this time, I am asking for a recommended motion or action.
Do you want to have questions for the council?
Do you have questions?
Yes, I have some questions.
Okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
My question is about the parking. Looking at the calculated parking, 21 spaces for worship, five for office, 13 for donut, donation center. If I look at the parking lot behind the building in the picture, that parking lot will not accommodate the 39 parking places.
Mr. Vice, or Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and that will be addressed in item 12A on the agenda. But in summary, right now, because of the offsetting uses, the worship area, for example, would not be in operation the same time as the donation center. Number, first of all, second, this is an area of town where there is on-street parking. And the county complex is in close proximity, which also has parking on it. So we have certain areas of the old town, this is why it's coming up later as an infill incentive item, is because we do know we have existing situations like this. If this building were attempted to go entirely retail, for example, the parking requirement would be even higher as a total requirement for the building. So that's why we have the infill incentive district area, and that's why that's on the agenda to be discussed in more detail. But generally speaking, these are going to be offset times of operation.
One other question, this being a church, is there any neighborhood conflicts with any of the businesses that are close to that? I know we can't serve alcohol within, what, 300 feet of a church and stuff like that?
Any business that's currently established, in effect, this will have no impact.
Okay.
They have existing rights.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Harmer, are there any future conversations regarding that aspect?
You mean regarding possible businesses? Nothing that the staff has been made aware of, no.
Okay. Just like to have all of our faces covered.
Well, and the dimensional requirements for the service of alcohol, you know, for example, at Main Street, far and away exceed what's required by state liquor.
Excellent. Thank you so much for those clarifying items. Council, do you have any further questions?
No.
All right, with that, we would like a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1753-20, as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome. Thank you for all that you do and what you will do in the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd be as a presentation on and discussion approval/disapproval of accepting the comprehensive annual financial statement and annual expenditure limitation for the report ending June 30th, 2020. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. We're finally done with our annual audit, and we're presenting our comprehensive annual financial report. As you're aware, I have already delivered a more simplified, detailed analysis of the town's financial data, plus all the individual funds previously. At a prior council meeting, this, it's just a more simplified version compared to this one. Mr. Ben Herr from Fester Chapman in Scottsdale will be presenting this item tonight, just to highlight you on the certain sections of the CAFR, and basically to let you know how the town's doing. And then also our expenditure limitation report, I just want to make a quick comment on that. We fell. Let me get to that portion real quickly. We came in underneath expenditure limitation by $11,608,854. So with that, I'll go ahead and allow Mr. Ben Herr to discuss this with you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and then Town Council. My name is Ben Herr, I'm with the Fester and Chapman. We have audited a ton of funds of financial systems, and your financial system is for the year ended June 30, 2020, and they express our opinion. I'm glad that we will just be able to present this auditor finance systems for your review and approval. Let me try to share my screen with you, so you can have this can bear with me. Before I start my presentations for the audit, I would like to start with the thank youing for town managements and then finance departments. Without their help and support, this audit would not be able to conclude or complete it, even with the COVID-19, there are so many challenges. And then our office decided to work from the remotely, and then the finance departments, and then city managements was full support of this audit, providing, scanning all the documentation we requested overdue electronically. So that was extra help, extra support for these years. And then compared in conjunction with some other audit we do, we were be able to complete this audit seamlessly than the others. That was, I want to comment for you. So first, of all, I believe you let it have received our audited report with our required communication for these years. For the, for the non-federal entity who received more than $750,000 of federal assistance, they are required to go through the single audit under the federal guidance. Unfortunately, at this point, we still haven't received the final, the guideline or the instructions for the performance of the single audit, so we were not be able to complete and conclude it on that sections. However, we actually, based on the information given to us, we were pretty much be able to complete our testing. I'm going to be able to present those, the testing reports, regards back to you. Basically, tonight's presentation will make mainly two sections. One is audit research summaries, so we actually perform the financial statements audit and then single audit. And then we also require to communicate it to, back to the, those who in governments of the town's council, town's town. So we actually have a summary of those communications in what we call is a report to the board, a report to the town council. The second section of my presentation is regarding summary of the financial summary, what we learned from the town's financial statements. First of all, we were able to, we actually performed our auditing and for the financial statements are, to make sure financial statements are presented in all mature aspects, in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principle. And then we have expressed our opinion without any modified on opinion, which means actually basically a clean audit for the town's council. The, I mentioned here as a not the final research, because of the single audit is still is waiting to be completed. So we are just kind of noted as a preliminary judge, I think that is going to be most likely our final report. We also have one, we just have one findings we noted as a mature witnesses in insurance controls. This is not like auditors kind of come across, find it, it is that basically the finance departments is actually as part of their preparation, the financial statements, they come across and noted that there was some errors included in their fix asset equation, they just corrected themselves for the, for the the schedule related to the financial statements. However, since it is, it triggers us to restate the being fund balances of the certain the same fund. So that's why it was actually kind of noted as the weaknesses or findings. The other section is a single audit, like I mentioned, the all years, we still kind of working on the finalizing our reports for the single audit. However, we still, since we are kind of pending on the final guideline from the federal governments to just going to tell us to the instructor auditors to what to be looked at and what to be tested. That's the only reason we are holding off our single audit report. This year's, what we determined and then tested as part of the major program is safety number 210109, which is which is coronavirus Lily funds through the AG cares program. Because of significance under that program and then the dollar amounts really made us to test that program to make sure it is in line with, in compliance with all the requirements for the program. So we tested it as part of the preliminary result. We didn't come across any finding or exceptions in conjunction with our understanding of grants requirements and then guidelines. However, still, we want to need to be finalized that a single report in conjunction with the uniform guidance, which is to be available this week or next week. And then after that, we should be able to finalize that report. Based on what we tested it as a preliminary result, we didn't have find a deficiency related to insurance controls over compliance. We have, we don't have any findings related to the major program we tested. The last section of the communications is what we call the report to the mayors and town councils. Auditors are required to communicate it what we come across our experience during the, this year's, during the each year's audit. And then that is basically is included in this report. One of the things, if there was any new accounting standards on the policy was adopted, we were just going to need to be reported back to you. But there's no new accounting standards and then no new policies adopted during this year's audit. We also come across if there is any sensitive estimation or disclosure that's related to the financial statements that is actually need to be addressed, that is including our communication to the letters. And we also require to communicate if there's any difficulties or if there's any disagreements with the management during the audit. We are happily to report that there is no such a things happen during the year. And that there is any, any other control weakness or findings. And then we also kind of noted that as part of in our communications, as I mentioned, that all years that we actually have one material weakness to relate to insurance control over financial, over capital asset, over financial reporting, we actually noted that as part of our communication to back to you. This section is about the financial information summary of the financial statements we actually have in details. So overall, the town have, town has total about, about two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand millions of the assets or asset and different outflows. And then they, the town also have about forty-two millions of the liabilities and then defer outflows. So the, the majority of the, the asset is made out of the capital asset and then cash and investments. And then liabilities is of twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars is actually made out of the long-term debt. And then about ten point five million dollars related to the non-current employee benefit, which is a compensation related liabilities. And which is in that that house that position of a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. This is a, the, what is little makeup totals, towns revenues, the total revenues for the years was approximately forty, forty-one point five million dollars. And then most of them, the one, twenty-five percent is came from the charge, charge twenty percent, twenty-one percent is from the charge for services. And then about eight point five million dollars and the six point six million dollars of the grants revenue from the state or federal governments. And then there's about two million dollars is the revenue comes, came from the property tax sources. So basically this, this is show, shows the revenue by sources, how that was a revenue was made up. And this is a expense expenditure side, so total of about thirty-two point five million dollars expenditures during the years. And then we just got to break it out by it's, you're going to pick out a function or categories. The last graph I have here is selected revenue by sources. So basically that shows that the revenue sources over last five years as a trend. So as you can see, the total charge for services is on the top, which is most of the destroyed chart process revenue is made out of the business type activities. Water source, that's why it's that those numbers is kind of the larger than the others. And then the next, next category is a state share revenue, sales tax revenues, those revenues shared by the state. And then the grants and the contribution revenue is a one of significant only from the last years to these years is, I think, most of them is contributed to the coronavirus Lily funds that are received by the town. And then the rest of the areas is pretty consistent from the, over the years. So that is end of my presentations. If you have any questions to me.
Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Ben Herr? All right, not hearing any, Mr. Herr. I want to say thank you for your presentation that you put together this evening. It was very comprehensive and easily understandable. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
With that, we need a motion.
I motion that we accept the comprehensive annual financial statement and annual expenditures limiting or limitation report ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. At this time, we will adjourn to Community Facilities District number one. With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to Community Facilities District one. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Item A is a discussion approval disapproval to accept the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number one audit. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Yes. Good evening, District Board. I want to go ahead and turn this over to Ben Herr. But before I do that, I want to make you aware that these reports are posted on to all of the Emma websites, which are websites where people can go and look at the financial statements to see how all of our areas are doing, especially those community facilities districts. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Ben Herr to present CFD number one.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Herr, the table is yours.
Giving this course, so let me just kind of present to the PowerPoint presentation I have ready for you for the district number one. Just bear with me. This is for the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District number one. We have performed our finance status audit in accordance with the government accounting standards and have issued our report for the fair presentation of finance statements. Along with that, we also have prepared required report to the board of directors, which includes our mandatory communications to the boards to summarize, address what had happened during the years. And then if there's any significant change, impacts into finance terms of the finance, to the district's financial statements. The first audit summary is basically, we issued a modified opinion, which is highest level of opinion for the statements, financial statements, which including representing that financial statements itself are fairly stated in all mature aspects in accordance with the government generally accepted accounting principles. We didn't come across any deficiencies on the internal control of finance reporting. We didn't have anything to report in terms of compliance for, from our audit. The second part of the presentations regarding, like I mentioned, all years are our communication to the board of directors of the districts. We didn't have any new account standard implemented or other policy procedures adopted without a proper authorization for the, the presentation of financial statements. We also included if there is any sensitive estimates or disclosure necessary for the readers of financial statements in our communication to the districts. As I mentioned, all years, we were really appreciative for all the support we have for the completion of this audit during this challenging times. So we didn't have any difficulty encounters during the performance of the audit, and that we didn't have any disagreements with the management. That's my end of the presentation for the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District number. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Herr. Counsel, do you have any questions? All right. Not seeing any. I recommend a motion.
Make a motion to accept the annual financial statement for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number one.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item seven B is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number one, July twentieth and November twenty-second, twenty twenty, special meeting minutes, Ms. Lisa Garcia.
All minutes represented. All minutes are presented in your packet, and we just asked for a motion to approve those minutes.
Excellent. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented in our packet.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. With that, we need a motion to adjourn from Community Facilities District number one.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from Community Facilities District number one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn to Community Facilities District number two.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Community Facilities District number two.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number nine A is discussion approval disapproval to accept the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number two audit, Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Thank you, District Board. Again, this is our audit for CFD number two. Given that, most of this is going to be repetitive on Mr. Herr's part, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to him.
Good evening, District Force. Let me just kind of present the district numbers to the financial, the summary result of finance status audit we have performed. And then also required communication for the auditors to the governments of the board. My presentation is basically has two parts. One is audit reserve summary for the finance status audit we have performed and required communication to the board to basically address all the issues and any significant changes for, to help your understanding of the audit performance for the district number two. Basically, we were able to express our unmodified opinion for the finance statements of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District number two, which indicating that our finance teams are presented fairly in all mature aspect and then accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We didn't have any kind of mature weaknesses or any deficiencies in our, in, in controls over financial reporting. And we didn't have any deficiencies on insurance controls over compliance. We actually have leave you tested. Second part of the, the report is actually regarding, report to the board of directors of the districts. Basically summarized what happens during the, this year's audit. As I mentioned, the earlier, there is no new account standards implemented for the district's number two, and that there's no policy procedures adopted without a proper authorizations by district. We did not have any difficulties encouraged during the, in performing of the audit. We did not have any disagreements with the management regarding the financial reporting of the district number two. So that was end of my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ben Herr. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve and accept the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number two audit.
Second, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Item B is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number two, July twentieth, twenty twenty, special meeting minutes, Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, I think that Lisa had to step away for a moment.
Okay, what she would tell us is they are included in the packet as they are. And if anybody has any questions, otherwise we just need to approve them. Does anybody have any question? All right, and we need a motion.
Make a motion. Go ahead, John.
Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number two, July twenty, twenty twenty, special meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. With that, we need a motion to adjourn from Community Facilities District number two.
Make a motion to adjourn from Community Facilities District number two.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Item eleven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of seven returning stronger grant applications received in the amount of forty thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. Item B is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC. Penal County Waterline Project in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-one cents for the Penal County CDG BG Waterline Project. Item C is discussion approval of, or disapproval of intergovernmental agreement between the Maricopa County and the Town of Florence for the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office Basic Training Academy. And item D is resolution seventeen fifty-nine twenty, which is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, rescinding resolution number seventeen forty twenty and adopting a local alternate expenditure limitation for the town of, the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one at forty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars and two no, forty-seven million seventy-five thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Item E is authorizing the town manager to accept a settlement on behalf of the Town of Florence and enter into a MOU with Southwest Risk. And item F is approving the register of demands ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty, in the amount of two million two five hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Ladies and gentlemen, is your consent agenda? Is there anybody who would like any item removed at this time?
Yes, I would like item B removed. Be as.
All right.
I like item E removed.
If there's no others, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing items B and E.
You got it, Karen.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read with the exception of items B and E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Michelle Cordes, item number B. Go ahead.
Yes, so I would just, due to the dollar amount, I just would like to have some explanation for the public on exactly what this is. And then I would also like for Chris to tell us how the contractor was selected.
Chris, are you on?
I am. I just wasn't sure if the mayor was going to, I guess, call me in. I apologize.
Mr. Dallas, thank you for being here. Come on forward.
The previous CDBG project was utilized the same contract that was previously done in Casa Grande. They have a job order contract set up for on-call services related to a variety of services. I believe almost two thousand and eight, Ellison Mills won a hard bid with the Town of Florence. The subsequent project, we decided to use a JLC with that same pricing structure that was utilized previously. And this time as well, so the underlying price has a hard bid price. But we utilize the JLC on the waterline projects, unfortunately. So the underlying price has a hard bid price, but we utilize the JLC on the waterline projects. Unfortunately, due to town's age and lack of quarter section maps that are essentially standard practice everywhere else, the Town of Florence doesn't have quarter section maps, we often run into change orders during our waterline projects, and the JLC is the most favorable way of handling some of the unknowns versus a hard bid mentality. And I hope that it kind of explains the thought process that we've utilized the last three CDPG projects. Like I said, hard bid, JLC, and then JLC for this one as well.
Madam Mayor. Chris, why don't you address the dollar amount, the agreements with the county and briefly on the the project. It's essentially a you, us, the town utilizing grant funds through the community development block grant program for this cooperative contract and project.
We started this project probably, well, I would think well over a year ago, and we worked with the county on utilizing a JLC contract from the very beginning of it, explaining the advantages, the limited liability on using a JLC versus all of the current issues that are going on in the hard bid world. A lot of municipalities are favoring JLCs, especially as it seems like projects that may have additional complications that you wouldn't maybe have on a streets project. Similar to the concept of using a CMR and a design built on a vertical construction with interference and unknowns. We were able to determine that Ellison Mills, we did get additional pricing strangely enough by the county on certain sections of the project. The county was contemplating doing a section of the project themselves. So they got two additional bids. And both of those additional bids were still higher than Ellison Mills. So town felt very good that our contract was approximately twelve percent lower than those additional bids on those certain sections. As Brett indicated, this is a CDPG project, so we're receiving the funds to do this project. That's why those those funds that the county has given us match the bid price plus the contingency on this project. And so far, unfortunately, every waterline project we've had, we have had some small change orders along the way where we find a line that's not in our GIS system. We have to determine if that line is either active or abandoned. That costs a certain amount. And then unfortunately, a lot of times we find certain homes are on that line. So then we have to tie in or add additional to the project. I think that summarizes again this year-long project with Pinal County and the CDPG process.
Madam Mayor, the only thing that I would add to Councilwoman Cortez is the council has already approved two separate agreements half in to do with this project. At the last meeting, you approved a IGA between the county and the town for us to complete this project under the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Just for clarification, it's not that I'm not that I don't, I'm not in agreement with the project. When I see that dollar amount, I just think it's a good idea for us to pull it off and speak about the project a little bit more just because it's a lot of money and our citizens like to know where our money's going. And although the agenda is available for people to see, not everybody who's viewing tonight's meeting has the agenda in front of them. So I just think it's better for us to just verbalize what we're doing for those that don't have the agenda in front of them. But I appreciate your explanation and it was a good one. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I add something additional for the council?
Yes, go ahead.
Related to this item between administration, town attorney, Jennifer Evans, we technically don't really have a grants department, but Jennifer Evans, we've all talked for the need of doing our own solicitation to have our own JLC specifically for water lines with complete negotiated pricing. So we are going to be doing something like that at the beginning of the year to avoid any more of the cooperative purchasing. I'm not sure there is a huge advantage to that method, but I think we all agree that as the town, and I don't want to say after 150 years, the word maturing, but I guess maybe myself and the department maturing, that we are going to do our own solicitation as we did for the wastewater and water plants. We have that JLC that has worked very good for the town with cooling engine and pumps. We are going to do an advertisement for specifically waterline, maybe collection line, installation and construction, those types of projects. I think there are some things that are that are missing in some of the other communities contracts. We would like to use Mace's contract. It's a it's a great contract, but it doesn't have unit pricing. I'm not favorable about using contracts that don't have unit pricing. At that point, I just feel like there's not as much protection for the public. So we are going to be moving some, we're going to be moving forward with a full-blown solicitation that will have negotiated unit pricing. So that'll be a two-part solicitation of the state law. So we will choose based on qualifications under the JLC, and then we will be negotiating a full set of unit pricings, unit prices on there. So I think that I really look forward to that. I think it's going to help clear up some of the the confusion about cooperative purchasing. I think cooperative purchasing is a great mechanism for for smaller communities like Florence or even sub seventy-five thousand population communities. But on this particular one where we're using a JLC that's not streets related, where everyone can kind of see what a square yard of pavement looks like, this is a little different. So I look forward to bringing that back to council. Hopefully in late February, maybe early March.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Salas. Michelle, do you want to go ahead and make a motion for that item?
Oh, yeah. I didn't know if we were going to do them individually or at the same time. I make a motion that we approve consent agenda item B as written.
Second. Motion on a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Vice Mayor Anderson, item number B or E. E and Edward.
Okay, my question, I guess, for Cliff is exactly what what is this about? What cost has the town incurred because of the opioid epidemic?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor members of the council. The town has incurred no direct costs that we've identified. We're certainly party to the pending litigation. There's actually litigation in federal court in the district. I think it's the Sixth Circuit in Ohio. It's been initiated Attorney General's Office for Arizona. The risk pool, which of which we're a member, along with ninety other cities and towns, small cities and towns have basically that board has decided to get involved in that litigation. A couple of years of litigation against some of the distributors and a manufacturer of opioids. There's discussion of a settlement. Basically, the Attorney General and the risk book kind of sent out a message to the town saying we'd like to know essentially your interest in participating in that settlement. I don't know what the amount would be. And there's a plan that would be approved by a federal magistrate slash mediator who would distribute based on the census months recovered and distributed by the county in Arizona. So we have no idea what kind of amount we would recover, but the end by turn and recover and disperse as much as possible evenly throughout Arizona counties. So essentially, you really have no official action that council needs to take. But we want to make sure that you're aware of this and that you're comfortable, if the need arises on short order, that the manager can go forward. Likely anything that comes back with more information on the settlement, we'll we'll have time to agendize and notify you. But we just want to make sure that we're not left out of it just in case. So essentially, they wanted some, they wanted us to kind of indicate that we would be interested by December fifteenth. So that's why this item is put on the agenda.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item eleven E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. Item twelve A is new business, Resolution Number seventeen fifty-four dash twenty, which is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving a town core incentive district plan request for Pinal County APN two hundred dash fifty dash zero six ninety and APN two hundred dash fifty dash zero seven hundred, PZID twenty dash oh one. Mr. Larry Harmer.
Hello again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is the second part of the previous item regarding the Higher Dimension Christian Center. The, as was noted earlier, the existing site contains sixteen parking spaces at the rear of the property plus three non-conforming spaces that actually front on North Park Street for a total of nineteen. That does include two ADA spaces which are on-site itself. Looking at their floor plan that they had submitted to the building division for evaluation, the worship center would require twenty-one total. The offices when in use would require five. The donation center when in use would require thirteen. Now, the the core infill incentive district or incentive plan does allow for variations to our strictest code requirements in these areas where there are non-conforming properties. And indeed, we're in this particular case, we have an existing property, existing building, existing parking, and site is developed one hundred percent. There is not room for any other modifications. Recognizing that the worship center is going to be used at a different time period than the donation center, then there would not be that or that that need for duplication of parking. The planning commission heard this item on November nineteenth and did recommend approval to bring forward to the town council. The findings at that time are noted in the staff report where the incentive plan is lawfully adopted and created under laws of the state of Arizona. And the infill incentive plan, you know, seeks to remedy situations where the infill incentive pertaining to undeveloped and underutilized properties, you know, would benefit the community as a whole. The subject property is within that district and the overall impact of use would not adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The request will encourage revitalization and use of property supportally, overall, just enhancing the overall fabric of the downtown core area. I'd like to note with this case as well as the previous one, surrounding property owners were notified of the application and had opportunity to comment. We've received zero comments at this time. So we've offer for your consideration the attached resolution adopting or permitting the use of the infill incentive district, and we still have the pastors available for any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Harmer. I'm going through it. I did not have any questions and I was able to see the planning and zoning hearing on it. Council, do you have any questions or comments?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Cortez.
Um, so I have a question, comment, and concern kind of all wrapped up in one. I realized that none of the homeowners in this area responded, but having lived actually a block away from a worship center, I know that their parking can, is not adequate, is not enough for how many people will attend. And so I just want to make sure that they're going to encourage the people who do come to try not to park in front of people's houses, blocking their driveways and stuff, that they're going to be considerate of the neighbors that are around them and try to use more of the public parking and and not interfere with those homeowners, even if they didn't respond to this when given the opportunity to speak. But that's really my only concern is just making sure that they're they are respectful of the homeowners and people that live around around that area.
Yes, this is Pastor Rodney. We will definitely be considerate in that matter. Definitely.
Thank you.
If I might add, Councilmember Cortez, the public parking immediately to the west on the county complex actually more than doubles the amount of parking available to the site. So I think that that is also a benefit and overall.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Harmer.
Do we have permission from the county?
It's public parking. It's not, I mean, they don't chain it off at night. That's not really an issue. It's just like people can come and park at town hall for an event at the community center or someplace else.
Okay.
It's open parking.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions or comments, we are ready for a motion.
I motion that we adopt a resolution number one seven five four dash twenty as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. And that motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item B is Resolution Number seventeen fifty-eight dash twenty. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring its intention to establish a streetlight improvement district to purchase energy for lighting the public streets and parks in the area within the corporate limits of Town of Florence, Arizona. Described on Exhibits A and B attached here too, declaring such improvements to be more than local or ordinary public benefit and that the expenses thereof be paid for by a levian collection of ad valorem taxes upon the assessed evaluation of all real and personal properties in a certain district to be known as the Town of Florence, Arizona, Streetlight Improvement District Six, Mesquite Trails, and offering such improvements be provided for under the provisions of Section forty-eight, five seventy-two, forty-eight, five seventy-six, forty-eight, five eighty-one, and forty-eight, six fifteen ARS. Mr. Chris Salas.
Evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. When the final plot was taken at the previous council meeting or two meetings ago, I think last meeting, last meeting, Larry brought up that we would be following up with the slid for Mesquite Trails. I want to remind the council that technically slids are to be required before final plots are taken. As it relates to Mesquite Trails, final plots were approved before my time, parcels one through five. And so as an act of good faith, we did approve parcel six before the sled was formed. So Mesquite Trails has a phase one portion of their development, which would be parcels one through six. This would incorporate all of those parcels. It would be for, yes, all of phase one. There will be a future slid for phase two, for phase three, phase four, and possibly phase five if they break it into a fifth phase. Are there any additional questions that I might answer tonight?
Hey, Councilmember Wall.
Um, I understand the proposal. I was just a little bit confused. The very last page of the document package has a letter from Chris to Polte Group regarding streetlight improvement districts. And I wondered what the relationship was between this presentation and Polte.
Councilmember Wall, this is Lisa Garcia. I just want to let you know that we got a letter in the packet that should not have been there. We did send out the correct letter and we did pull that page from the packet that you see online.
Okay, great. I will put an X through it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right. With that, I want to say thank you for the presentation and we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number one seven five eight dash two zero as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C is Resolution Number Item C is resolution number seventeen sixty-one dash twenty. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to execute the memorandum of understanding between the town of Florence and the greater Florence Chamber of Commerce for the office of tourism rural cooperative marketing program in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and call forward Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, without further ado, we've been talking about this program for for a few months and we announced, I believe, two meetings ago that how we had been funded uh through the Arizona Office of Tourism for their matching grant rural community fund for marketing. Uh, as as part of that, I believe council's aware that the chamber uh submitted the application. Uh, and then we agreed to match the funding for the grant. Uh, and we have developed a scope of services uh which is which is in the packet. Following the announcement, uh, we've met with the chamber uh to figure out who would share the duties and and who would be responsible for the different aspects uh to make it a successful program. One of the requests that came from the chamber was that in addition to the funds uh that that are matched as part of the program. Uh, the the chamber said, you know, it's probably a pretty good idea if we get some outside help uh for the graphic design component. So in addition to the to the twenty-one thousand, uh, the town is is going to bring on a consultant to help us uh with some graphic design for the different features that will go out, uh, both um online media as as well as magazines and and brochures as part of the packet. Uh, the key portion of this item is the MOU between the the town of Florence and and the Florence, Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. Uh, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
I didn't have any questions, but I wanted to just comment on the vast array of marketing that will occur in regards to um, you know, reaching out past Phoenix and Tucson and all across Arizona. This is something that we've been talking about and wanting to do. I did have a question in regards to um the timeline, just for public information, if we can share that as well of how long we're going to be advertising for.
Madam Mayor, I'm I'm looking through the packet right now to to find that that answer. Uh, if if I recall, it it begins in November and it goes through August. Uh, and the way that it sets is there are a series of publications that take out uh that go on uh over that time. There are different publications and and different online outlets. Uh, we will design uh and provide that written content, photos and and graphic design for each one of those publications based on a very specific schedule over that time period.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions as well?
Judy does and I do.
All right, um Judy, go ahead.
Uh, where's the funding? Where's the twenty-one seven ninety-six coming from in front in the budget?
Manager's contingency.
Okay, thank you.
Something that was requested by council.
Okay.
And council member Cortez.
Uh, mine actually isn't a question. I just wanted to say how excited I am for this. Um, kudos to the chamber and to the town for going after this. Um, I know when we found out about it, it was really short notice, so everybody had to hustle to get um the paperwork done and submitted, so I am excited. I'm excited to see the partnerships that are going to happen with other agencies and I hope that we see some great benefits from this money that should be well spent. So, great job.
Thank you. Great team.
All right, with that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution one seven six one dash two zero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I. I.
All opposed same sign. And that motion carries. All right, and item number D is resolution number seventeen sixty-two dash twenty, which is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence. Pinal County, Arizona, approving the development agreement and lot sale prohibition for the mesquite trails ASLI LLC. Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this item could be very complicated, so I'm just going to lay it out to you in its simplest form. Uh, lot sale prohibition agreements is something that council has approved previously. Their intent is to make sure that something happens in the future and instead of holding a, excuse me, a financial assurance to make sure that that's going to happen, uh, we essentially uh don't uh allow the developer to sell lots uh to make sure it occurs. Uh, some past examples here in Florence, uh, you'll you'll remember, uh, remember when we had the lots uh in Anthem that were in the flood plain and weren't taken out of the flood plain and the issues that caused. We've done a couple of lot sale prohibition agreements in Anthem that didn't allow them to sell and develop those lots until the full FEMA process for the le- letter of map provision was completed. Uh, and once that those lots were taken out of the flood plain, then they were eligible to sell. So in this case, as Chris just enunciated a little while ago, mesquite trails is going to be developed in a series of phases. And as part of those phases, there's public infrastructure that needs to be developed. Uh, more specifically in this agreement, it speaks to Felix Road. So there are a portion of improvements that are going to occur on Felix Road in the first phase, which is parcels one through six. And those improvements will be constructed by the developer as part of the construction of those phases. But further on in that development, there is more public infrastructure that has to be built on Felix Road. So this lot sale provision prohibition agreement essentially says we're gonna hold uh put a lot hold uh on these three parcels of residential lots. And they won't be able to be sold until those improvements are completed upon an approved timeline uh that ties in with the traffic impact analysis for the development, if that makes sense. So essentially, this is this is this is an assurance that is not a bond or a letter of credit or cash in lieu. Uh, it's it's holding sale of lots until those improvements are completed for the public good. Any questions?
Uh, yes, I uh I'm a little confused by that, Brent, because uh uh we're saying that uh mesquite trails, especially they won't uh develop that until the traffic gets to like seven thousand cars, right?
Yes, so uh as part of all these developments, we do a lot of preliminary engineering work uh before the development is is provided. So uh, we do uh utility uh design and factoring uh of utilities to understand usage. And size of sewer lines, number of lift stations. It's the same thing from a transportation standpoint. So when we analyze uh at the transportation analysis portion, it's based on known engineering standards that apply to what we call level of service. So we want to keep our level of service uh ahead of what's called level of service D or delays. So the engineer that does the traffic impact analysis uh determines those thresholds for improvements. In this case, it's tied to traffic on Felix Road.
Well, uh, what's confusing to me is looks like we have a chicken and egg problem here. Uh, if we don't start building homes out there, then the traffic is not going to go up. So how how do we get to seven thousand uh cars a day? If we don't have homes out there. Because trails is what a couple thousand homes.
So Vice Mayor, the way it works in this in terms of this development is the traffic impact analysis factors, how many vehicles are going to be tribute contributed to the regional network based on the construction of parcels one through six. Uh, and when that meets that threshold for need of improvement for the remainder of Felix Road, keeping in mind that they're going to have to approve that portion of the regional improvements that directly impacts those phase one improvements. But this is uh, these factors are in place to say when to start phase two so that you have a regional facility that can not only carry the traffic associated with mesquite trails, but also what we call the background traffic, which is the regional traffic that comes from Anthem North and from Arizona Farms Road South. So it's it's a comprehensive look at development triggers for improvements.
If the developer wants to go ahead and put the infrastructure in and pay for it. Can he do that?
If they wanted to, yes, but as you can imagine, uh, these types of improvements cost millions of dollars. And so they want to garner revenue. They want to sell lots. They want to build homes. They want to have a revenue stream and build that revenue stream so it's easier for them to complete the rest of those improvements because they have cash in hand. Uh, it would be very difficult for them to put that capital outlay upfront uh before they've built, developed and sold those lots in the other parcel, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Kind of like running a business, you know, you want to delay uh some of the upgrades to your building and and what have you uh until you have a revenue stream to help support that. So development of houses is very similar.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense.
All right. Are there any additional questions, comments or concerns? Council member Wall?
Well, the the prohibition is for parcels seventeen, eighteen and nineteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Not the initial approvals.
Yes, ma'am.
Taken. So there would be additional traffic generated from those parcels.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then I just saw a chat pop up from Chris indicating that he wished to speak.
All right, Mr. Salas, come forward, please.
Uh, there is probably some background that should have been uh brought up at the beginning of this. Maybe we were a little we were trying to be efficient, not effective in our communication. This agreement, and I'm going to be very careful not to speak disparagingly about previous either councils or previous developers, but the development agreement that was done was very one-sided for this community. And they have they have a very strong development team and a very strong development agreement. So essentially, there was no discussion of phasing at all in their agreement and the town was really at a disadvantage on this. And so me and Brent were not very comfortable with the way the agreement was written. We felt that it was unfair. So we went back to them and obviously on behalf of the town said, you know, this is really a one-sided um agreement. In order for this to really work, we need to be a, we need to have a partnership here, similar to our concept that we feel like we have with Pulte. We want to have a partnership. And so we went and we gave them some some, I guess, ideas. And honestly, this was a very, very hard sell. It was very difficult to get them to agree because they essentially they didn't have to. They didn't have to at all. They they had the development agreement and there's no discussion of of phasing, so it took a very strong stance to even leverage something that protected the town. So essentially, they could have phased it however they wanted, built it whenever they wanted, and we would have sort of had to deal with it. That's that's not very typical to ha- have that freedom in a development agreement. But we asked them, are there some some underlying principles that we can all agree to? And I mean, initially, the response was, Chris, this is common sense. We're going to build that road when those parcels develop along the frontage. And while for them it's common sense, for the town it leaves us completely unprotected. There's just, there's no protections for the town. They'll they'll essentially, we'll let you know, Chris, when we want to build it. And that's just not how, you know, again, local government should work. So we went back and we said, are there are there some some concepts that we can agree to that that doesn't hurt you? It still offers us some protection and came up with those three criteria and that some of that's background traffic. Some of it's their traffic and some of it is their phasing. So there's a couple. And that was my concern is for them, the common sense approach said, when those parcels are adjacent to Felix Road develop, then we'll build it. And my concern, town manager's concern was, what if the project gets essentially shelved? And eight years later, we have fifteen thousand cars on Felix Road and we can't get the developer to build the road because in their mind, well, that's not our fault. Well, typically, if we had a bond for that, we could force the improvement by pulling in the bond. And so I think it's um Brent and I have done a little bit of a disservice to ourselves by not explaining all the hard work that went into this agreement. This is something that, again, Brent and I talked about. We don't do a very good job of of patting ourselves on the back. This was something that took a lot of effort that was a little out of the norm to get them to agree to it, but I think it offers the town a lot of additional protection in the future if phases. Uh, I think that's phase three, maybe it's phase four, both parcels that are uh designated in the agreement. If they if they don't develop in time and the background continues to build, either through a different development, at least the town can force that improvement to be built. It it's a big win for the town.
When was that original agreement um crafted?
Brent?
I want to say two thousand and seven.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
And like I said, I do not want to speak disparagingly about.
No, that's that's okay. Absolutely. I respect that. I just wanted to, you know, make it known like it was
Yeah.
In the past.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's no further questions or comments, we can move forward with a motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number seventeen sixty-two dash two zero as read.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
I.
All opposed same sign and that motion carries. Sorry, there was like dang real quick outside. I didn't know what it was. Um, item number thirteen is the manager's report. Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, in the interest of time, I'm going to I'm going to be fairly quickly. Obviously, I have my written report uh in the binder. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't once again encourage folks uh to take COVID nineteen seriously, wear their masks, uh, keep appropriate social distancing. Uh, the as as you've heard all over the media, we are in a worst case now uh than we have been in the past. And when you put it in terms of just since our last council meeting, how much things have changed? Our today's seven day average in Arizona is five thousand five hundred and seventy-five cases a day. Last council meeting, it was two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine. Uh, so it's more than doubled uh since our last council meeting. We're we're now getting about thirty cases a day on average in Florence. At our last council meeting, we were averaging four cases a day. Our hospitals in Arizona are at ninety-two percent capacity. California is at eighty percent capacity and they have a three week stay at home uh ordinance. So be careful. Look out uh for you and and your family. I know I'm getting emails every day from the school district about kids that are that are getting quarantined due to COVID nineteen. I've been able to avoid that thus far. Uh, but uh it it certainly is is a serious health risk and it's something I hope all those folks out in TV land are are really paying attention to. Couple of things I'd like to highlight in in the report. Uh, under partnerships and relationships, one of the things that a a group of folks here at the town decided to take on a few months ago was United Food Bank. United Food Bank contacted us and said, look, we're going to pull out of Florence. And we said, please don't. We think that we can get a group of volunteers and faith organizations together uh to continue the food bank here in Florence. Uh, that has been very successful. Uh, we've continued to increase the number of food boxes that are being provided. And we actually ran out of food at our our last uh food bank uh delivery uh in November. Um, we brought on a new partner to assist us uh in that effort because we needed a five oh one C three to assist uh our town and community volunteers. Uh, and that is uh the Lions Club of of Florence and they're going to be our five oh one C three sponsor. But I think it's indicative of a community partnership that's doing great good uh in in the town of Florence and something that we should be very, very proud of. And and once again, thanks go out to United Food Bank for working with us in in terms of that program. The other thing that I wanted to highlight tonight is even though we have the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, our sales tax collection statewide in terms of state shared revenues continue to hold their own on a month by month basis. And if you look at the report, I have more specifics in there. But each of those individual funds in in states from the state shared revenue perspective uh are above projection. That hasn't always been the case with HERF. We had several months where HERF was HERF was below. Uh, but HERF HERF has rebounded uh and is now in the positive. More specifically, I always like to focus on our building permit data and not only the building permit data, but the valuation, the enhancement of value in the community of Florence that continues to occur through our very positive development activities. And there is a sheet that's just dedicated to that and in the form, and it's, it's quite impressive in terms of our increase in, in valuation. About 17.7 million dollars this year. So we need to continue that upward trend. It's an exciting time to be in Florence. Madam Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. And you are absolutely right. It is an exciting time to be in Florence and I always tell people, look at the market because I know homes out there. It's, our homes are going fast and they're going for a good price and we have a lot of great things happening. In regards to department reports, any member of council have any questions or comments? All right. I did have one and going through, I was pretty excited because I know we've had, you know, some conversations about businesses coming in and some great things happening. And I was really excited when I read pre-application meetings were happening for Big O Tires, for the Anthem Car Wash, Anthem Storage and Desert Rock. And I know they recently broke ground this past weekend. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff for facilitating those meetings. And I'm just looking forward to everything that's, you know, coming to fruition. Item fifteen is our call to the public. This is our second call to the public. Anybody have anything that they'd like to add at this time? Trenton, Lisa, is anybody out there?
Mayor, no members of the public are ready to speak at this time.
All right. We're going to go ahead and close call to the public. Item sixteen is called the council for current events only. Councilmember Wall, I'm going to ask you to go first this evening.
Okay. First of all, I want to commend the finance department for an excellent report. If any member of the public has any question and wants to delve into the, the nitty gritty details of our financial health, the agenda item tonight would be a wonderful place to examine our financial status, which is obviously very healthy. So thank you to the finance department for those, actually there were three reports, which I thought were very good. Second of all, I just want to encourage the public to come out one evening during December and take a drive down Main Street because the lighting took place on Friday evening and it looks absolutely gorgeous. It'll get you in the Christmas spirit. And also if you get a chance to stop by the ice skating rink and, and watch the kids or adults that are brave enough to, to skate on that surface. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. This is basically my final official council meeting, other than the ceremonial one. So before I break down in tears, I just want to thank you all for sharing the last five and a half years with me. So signing out, over and out.
Oh, thank you, Karen. You have been a treasure. And we still have one more, even though it's ceremonial. Councilmember Hughes.
I attended the Pennell Partnership meeting. We had Elliot Pollak give us a 2021 overview. And it says, nothing lasts forever and that's a good thing. He talked about the downturns. He said that probably by the third quarter of next year, you'll see things start looking up. So we've got a little, little bit more rough, rough time to go, but you know, the mark, the real estate market is hot right now as, as Michelle can tell you, I'm sure. There's only like, he had stated there was only for the greater Phoenix, there was only 11 days. 11 day, what do they call it? I've been out of it so long.
Inventory?
Yeah. Lord. So, but Merry Christmas to everybody. And I would, I would probably try to do ice skating, but with my back, I better not. I'll watch on the sideline.
Councilmember Larson.
I first of all, I want to start with positive. So Karen, I really have appreciated my time serving alongside you. I'll never forget. I know we're going to have the ceremonial one next time. But those who know me hate, know that I hate public speaking. I was somebody who's always been like super shy and super afraid of it. And I was being like six or seven months pregnant when we did our first debate and it was live. And Karen sat next to me and I came up there and I was panicking and, and breathing heavy and I don't know if I can do this. And she's like, you've got it. You've got it. Just take a deep breath. And she was the person who calmed me down. And she sat there and she was just my mother hen and just sort of made everything okay. And I think I wanted to thank you for sort of taking me under your arm and helping me, you know, show me the ropes and allowing me to, to really grow with your guidance. So I really wanted to appreciate, express my appreciation to you, Karen, for being so kind and thoughtful through all of it. You've really been a guiding light for me. So I just wanted to say thank you. And other news, I know that that Brent had touched on COVID. Obviously, this is something that's been very frustrating to me and I've brought it up before and we've talked about it and we've, we've sent this out. November 2nd, we sent this out to Canal County. I personally have grown frustrated even more with the lack of response from Canal County. And so I know I'm personally am going to be reaching out to them, sending emails, calling and sort of pounding them until I get accurate data. I know the data is always going to be skewed nationally statewide. It's never going to be a hundred percent accurate. But I believe it's important for Florence to have data that designates prison populations versus general population. And that is basic and necessary and it's something everybody else has been doing and we have not been given the opportunity. So I'm not going to give up on that fight. I encourage the citizens to reach out to the people who are supposed to be representing us on the county level to get us the accurate data. And like, again, like I said, I've been growing very frustrated with that and I'm not going to give up and I'm going to continue fighting so we get that accurate data. So I just want to encourage others to do the same in that regard. And otherwise, everyone, please stay healthy and check on your neighbor and be kind and courteous. And if you're in the housing market right now, I sympathize for you if you're trying to buy a house. Cause I know how difficult that can be. And if you're selling, have fun with it, enjoy the process. So everything's looking great right now in Florence. It's a great place to be.
Thank you. Councilmember Cortez.
I don't know what I want to talk about. I drew a blank. Sorry. I was just like. So being the Realtor on this council, yes, the housing market is hot. I don't even know where the 11 days came from because in Phoenix, a house going on the market probably has about 15 offers that first day. And all of them are over asking price, waving appraisals, waving inspection. Yeah, it's nuts. It's nuts right now, but I'm used to this because this is what it was like when I left Colorado. We were in the heat of this. And I will just let you know, it's going to get more nuts with the passing of legalizing marijuana. So be prepared because that's what sent Colorado into a tailspin in their market. And it has not cooled down since. So yeah, if you're selling your house, now is a really good time for you. If you're trying to buy a house, it's a tough one because you are competing against a lot of people. But other than that, I did not make the town Christmas lighting. Because I had COVID, I've kind of tried to not do a whole lot of public stuff just to kind of try to give myself a little extra time to heal. I have what some of us are calling COVID brain, which is for those of us that have had children is similar to pregnancy brain. Your brain just doesn't quite click as fast as it should. So I've been struggling with that, just trying to stay focused because COVID definitely does something to the function of your brain and being able to focus. So I've been trying to get through that. As always, since this has started, I just want to remind everybody to reach out to your neighbors, especially those that live alone or need assistance, bake some cookies. Now's a great time to drop off cards or little gifts or something like that. Remember the little ones? I was reading a study that COVID is having a huge effect on our younger kids. Just because they so much, just like our elderly, they, they depend on that social interaction. So right now this is having a big effect on our little kids. And so if we can just remember to be kind to the kids when we see them outside and, and encourage them and just say hi. You know, we don't have to get close to them or anything like that. Be kind to one another and Karen, I sent you an email. So I'm not going to go into that, but I do appreciate you and I appreciate all the guidance you have given me as well. And I look forward to many, many more interactions with you and your continued guidance for the town because I know you're not going anywhere.
Oh, no. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, thank you. Well, first Karen knows how much I appreciate her because Eric Falcone, I've had to call her just so she can bring me down off the ceiling over something that I'm upset over. And she, she does a good job at that. And Michelle, your comment about COVID brain, I I think I've got COVID brain, but I haven't had COVID. Because it seems like the older I get, my short term memory does bother me a little bit. But the things that I wanted to talk about was I also attended the Pennell Partnership. And I always enjoy Elliot Pollak. He's sort of the state economist, if you want to call him that. And he's always been so up, but he wasn't quite so up this time. And that was a little disappointing, but he tried and I think he did a good job. You know, trying to turn this into a positive future for us. And like you said, it's going to be fourth quarter or maybe even next year before we really get out of this. The good news that I wanted to thank the town about was Saturday. I was putting up some Christmas lights in the house and I heard all the sirens and going on. Debbie come back and says, what's going on? So I ran outside and here goes Santa Claus by the house. So I want to thank public safety, the fire department and the police department for their little parade that they put on. I don't know if they went through all the neighborhoods, but they, they looped around our block. And so I got to see them coming and going because I live on the corner. But I saw them go over into the other neighborhood. So I, I'm assuming that they were probably out all day long with this, taking, taking Santa Claus around. And I know the kids enjoyed it because the kids on our block were all out waving. That was probably better than having to go downtown because I think they did get more participation from Anthem because we know our people don't go downtown to some of these things. And this time they got to see Santa Claus on the fire truck. So thank you guys. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. So yeah, no, that was amazing on Saturday to see that. And I know community service put a lot of work into, you know, coordinating with public safety and the maps. And I believe they were out from, you know, nine AM to about 2 PM, maybe three. So they, while they didn't go up and down every road, they worked really hard to try to hit every section. And there was some feedback that was shared. You know, about, you know, hey, over in this area. So I'll, I'll pass that on to Hezekiah. Friday, the, the lighting of the Silver King in Main Street was amazing. Thank you to everybody who was able to come on out and be there. The gentleman who actually lit the building and Main Street. Brent, can you share his name again?
Madam Mayor, I, I don't recall his name. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well.
If Hezekiah is still on, Hezekiah could probably share his name, but I don't recall his name.
I want to say it's Jason, but I didn't want to miss say it, but boy, let me just tell you, the amount of planning and work that went into lighting the building and all the way up the Main Street. People were surprised because last year, as you can remember, it was only Silver King that was lit. So when we flipped the switch that he had created originally last year and everything lit up Main Street, everybody that was there was absolutely amazed and it just looked so beautiful. He also lit his house. He lives over on Echo Lane. And it was kind of funny because I overheard a conversation between him and our new council member, Neil. And he said, yeah, you know, right across the street from my house, it's lit up. It shines into my house. I said, oh, I have to see this. Well, we drove by it. Oh, it's absolutely gorgeous. I know community services is putting together a, a, a map of the community where you could register by today. Your home, if you want to be included on the tour, if you're going above and beyond, if you're lighting your house and you know, you want to share that joy with others, go ahead and let them know. So that way we can add you onto the list. We have great things happen. All month long, the town actually created a website or page on the town website that talks about, you know, how can I get a time to go ice skating? What events and activities are happening? Where is it happening? We have a drive in movie, the Polar Express. Originally it was supposed to happen this past Friday, but with unforeseen circumstances of the governor's orders, some things needed to be put into place prior to hosting the event. And now that is going to be happening on December 11th. That was announced on this past Friday. So we hope to see everybody out and enjoying the holiday season in a socially distanced, respectful way. So with that, next week we will have a special council meeting where we will be changing of the council. So I'd like to give everybody notice and hope that you can join us. At this time, we are going to go ahead and adjourn to executive session. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries.